First on our agenda is pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Sandra Gilliard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to call Mr. Mark Chumney up for the invocation. Hey, Pastor Mark Chumney, sorry.
That's all right. Let's go ahead and bow our heads and pray. Father God, we are so thankful, Lord, for the servants who are sitting before us, who serve this school, who serve this community. God, I pray that this afternoon, that there would be peace and there would be wisdom in the middle of this meeting. God, that all the decisions that have to be made, Lord, would be made in a timely manner. And God, that your favor would be present in this room. We pray all of these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Bless you. We are honored to have with us today for our presentation Ms. Jimmy Simons, one of our own from Putnam County Schools. If you'd like to come up, Jimmy.
Thank you so much for having me today. I want to thank also, first of all, Ms. Laura France, I don't know if she's in the room, for inviting me, for her enthusiasm and invitation. And I want to thank Mr. Rick Surancy, our superintendent, for his support of pickleball in the schools and at our clinic. He and Ms. France actually came to our teacher clinic that we held last week. And I understand he's been on the radio also. I missed it this morning, but my granddaughter did win the prize that he sparked through... What do you know about pickleball? We called in as we were turning into James A. Long, and she won the prize. So, thank you, Mr. Surancy.
You're welcome.
Pickleball, as known by CBS News, NBC Sports, and Sports Network, WCVBTV, as America's fastest-growing sport, and I truly believe it is. It is just booming. We are not one of the earliest states or cities to embrace pickleball. It is a really fast, just exploding sport. Don't judge it by its name. It's very competitive, very exciting for any name. I actually wish it didn't have that name. It's a combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong. You can learn this game in 15 minutes. That's one of the reasons it's so popular. But it takes a little more than that to become developed, and only the best become pros. It's played on...it can be played on any hard surface, as long as you've got 20 by 44 feet in width and length. Recreational courts are used, streets, gyms, malls, prisons, churches, and schools. It's just exploding everywhere. I know Chicago was featured on the news probably three weeks ago for their program within the prison. Martha Poitman and Mickey Holland were ambassadors who brought pickleball to Putnam County two years ago. They did a clinic, and probably eight to 10 people started at that time. It's grown from there. The St. John's River Pickleball Group, as it's known, has volunteers from Polatka and Wolatka that work in the schools, communities, and churches to promote pickleball. Our only purpose is to promote the love and enjoyment of pickleball. We've taught probably 250-plus kids since last spring, just in clinics. It's just an intro clinic, but it seemed to be very, very well-received. And I'm so excited that we've been invited to provide an opportunity for all our schools in Putnam County. I have friends that are ambassadors in St. John's County, Alachua County, and Flagler County that have said, "How did you get in the schools? How did you do this? We've been begging," and they're so nervous. But I was nervous too. But when Laura France called me at 10 o'clock one night, she was still working in July, and she said, "Jimmy, let's talk about pickleball." I said, "Oh, gosh, my heart almost stopped," because I was just so nervous to even ask. And all we wanted to ask for is could we provide our teachers a training in the area of pickleball, and they could use it if they would like. And she offered us so much more. And so, thank you for your support. I had a friend that spoke in Alachua County the other day, and after he finished, I said, "How did it go?" He said, "Well, four schools said they might want to talk to me later." I said, "Oh, okay." I was real glad for him. He said, "Please tell me how you did it." And I said, "Well, you've got to have a Laura France." And I think we've got the only one. Once...I wanted to let you know, we have a slideshow for you of Putnam County students. But the first slide that you'll see is actually Anna Lee Waters, as she competes...competed in the U.S. Open. She is 11-years-old. She was competing against a 33-year-old Canadian woman in the finals, and she won.
Wow.
She's also competed in the U.S. Open with her mother in the 19-year-old-plus division, and with her grandfather in mixed doubles, and he is 69-years-old. She said, "That's why it's my favorite sport." She said, "I get to play with my parents and my grandparents." But it's for young and old in-betweeners and the pro-elite, which are usually between 20 and 30-years-old. Equipment...the equipment that it takes is not much, just pickleballs. And if I could pass them around...they range in price. This one's actually from Walmart, $5.84. It's wooden. This one's actually aluminum, I believe. That one's for pickleball...from Pickleball For All.
So, it's very specific to pickleball.
It is. It is. The sport was actually developed in 1965, but it's just now taken off. We were...we received two grants, and with the grant from Pickleball For All, we received probably close to $1,500 worth of equipment, and we gave that to Interlochen High. We received a grant for Polatka High School also. That's one of the Pickleball For All paddles. This is a Pickleball For All paddle. Pickleball paddles are usually wood, composite, which means aluminum and fiberglass. This is one of those. We've got 20 of these, 20 of those, and 10 aluminum ones. Isn't it light?
Light.
This is my granddaughter's paddle. The cost on those is $20 to $30. The wooden one was probably $20. The first one, $5.84. $79 to $89.
Mr. Simons, it reminds me of the days in the dean's office.
Paddle.
Uh-huh.
Although these would not quite meet the state regulations.
It's missing the holes, isn't it?
This one's a $150 paddle.
Oh, my gosh.
These are the ones that are going fur.
Is this because it's not wood?
Yeah, it's aluminum with a fiberglass coating. They're very light. These are the balls. They look just almost like pickleballs. Few more holes, a little bit heavier, and they're hard.
Ms. Gilliard tried to turn it on.
Yeah, they're like wiffle balls, but they're heavier, larger, and harder.
Oh, okay.
And all else you need is a net, and you're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're ready to see some of our students. Thank you, Mr. Cawthon. And thank y'all for your help in preparing this. There's Anna...whoops, that's not Anna Lee. We're almost there. The first little girl you'll see is the 11-year-old. She's in the grand stadium in her last competition. That's in Naples, Florida.
I want to play some pickleball. Are you interested?
This rap contains a ton of information. It's a little bit strange, but lots of information. These are our kids now.
Can't be that much different than racquetball.
Very similar. You're right.
I loved racquetball.
Is this Rendell doing the rap?
Uh-huh. That's our quarterback, Polatka High School. He picked it up immediately.
Of course.
That's the girl that won the contest this morning. We want to try and implement the program in E.H. Miller also.
That would be awesome.
It's Polatka High School again. This is with a...in a 45-minute clinic. That's a clinic at Grace Fellowship Church.
Price Middle?
Price Middle School.
Call it Gilliard Middle School.
Even their resource officer, with her gun on her hip, played pickleball with these kids. She loved it. She, Lysy Tobler, he's our first coach or PE teacher to actually start teaching the sport. He started his unit this year.
From church, Rick.
That's our head football coach, Willie Fells, from Polatka. That little boy was really, really good, that young man. Very competitive. You can put a pickleball court anywhere you have space.
So, it's not done with a wall and the sidewalls like?
No walls at all. Just depends on how far you want to chase that ball, where you put some kind of stop. And let's see, I think it's almost over. Super job.
Was that John Chestain singing?
It may have been, Mr. Chest. There he is. Thank you. We'll be ready for the next one. Okay, and a little bit more. We talked about Laura and her getting us into the schools, and she's had so many ideas. She...I wish she were here today to express some of it.
She's here now.
Oh, is she? She just went on and on, and I thought, "Gosh, 10 o'clock at night, she's still working, and she's still full of energy." But we're real excited about some of the things she would like to do. And I'd like to also...let's see. We...let me...I'm sorry, I lost my place for a minute. We...good, I've covered a lot of this. I don't want to be too long. I'd like to introduce Justin Campbell. Y'all may know Justin already. Justin, oh, they do all know you. I've only talked with him over the phone.
He asked me if you said his name, would you repeat it a little louder and slower?
Justin Campbell? Is that okay?
That's what I wanted, yes.
He has got some ideas for the after-school program, too. He told me he's got seven schools on and two more possibilities, and this is exciting to me, because his plan is to use it not only with the students, but with families, too.
Justin's our 21st-century coordinator.
Yeah.
Perfect fit.
Yes, we thought so, too. That's another idea of Laura's. I'm just really excited about Putnam and hope the teachers embrace it also. Let's see. Principal J.T. Stout from Polatka High School originally heard about pickleball at a presentation at a Rotary Club meeting, and he said, "I want that at my school." But according to Mr. Chestain, J.T. says that about everything. But he got pickleball. He got our first grant from United States Association of Pickleball Players. He got the first grant. And what we wrote into the grant is, because we know we can't afford enough equipment for every school, we're going to use and schedule it on a rotation basis for any school that wants to participate. We had a clinic recently...oh, also, let me mention, Kim Swaim had us come and do a clinic at her school, just a brief clinic, and she really enjoyed it. And that day, she asked her principal about purchasing pickleball equipment. Her principal went ahead and purchased for the whole school. They've got their own. They don't even have to share in the rotation.
Where is Kim at Jenkins? Where is she?
Kim is at Price Middle School, and Michelle Higginbotham purchased that equipment for her and Matt Nehru. Yeah, we were excited about that. But let's see, whatever, what else? Let's go ahead. We have some teacher training slides. I know you'll know these people. We did a clinic and had 12 participating teachers, even on the day of meet and greet. They made arrangements to be covered for their meet and greet day, just so they could come to the pickleball training. We're excited, but we've already got enough people, teachers, to fill another clinic, and we'd like to host another one. But I think you'll recognize these people, and we appreciate them coming. Look front center at the very first slide. When it comes up, you'll see our superintendent and our assistant superintendent in her tennis shoes. Thank you both for coming. They played hard. They played all day long. Oh, it's pretty small, I'm sorry. But right in the center back, there they are, and they're the teachers. I'm not so sure what Ms. France and I are surprised about. Okay, we gave a demonstration of setting up the nets. That's one of the hardest parts.
It's a Grace.
It's a Grace Fellowship. They're so nice to let us use the church for this. That was Sip Falone from Crescent City. This is Rance Hightower from Jenkins Middle School. Deborah Chao from Q.I. Roberts. And I think that's Coach Yancy from Interlochen High School. And that is Mr. Polly from Miller Middle or Middle...yeah, Miller Middle School. Eric Gibson, Interlochen High School. And then we'll have Jerry Rothschild, that played so hard. I wasn't sure he was going to be okay. They were falling. They were sweating.
How many can be at once?
We play four doubles. They can play singles or doubles. And that was...the previous one was Mr. Nehru from Price Middle School. That's Kim Swaim. Coach Nehru said he took pickleball as a credit course in college in New York.
Wow.
And that's Ulysses Tobler. And I think that's Tara Bauer...oh, no, that's Tara Grace from Interlochen Elementary School. Those are our teachers that are ready to kick it off.
Awesome.
And do y'all have any questions? Any questions?
And so, it costs the school pretty much nothing, because you get the grant for them. Polatka was just fortunate enough to get the first grant.
That's a really good question. And we can get by on these grants. We've gotten two, and we've got two more pending with the United States Pickleball Association. They get two nets that, if four can play at a time, like you were asking, that's only eight people on a court, and they will have students sitting. If we can get enough, maybe with some assistance, if we can get enough nets to have within that rotation, four to five nets, then we should be able to keep the kids engaged.
Jimmy, I can see this similar to what happened with archery several years ago. You know, we introduced archery at Jenkins Middle School, and it took off.
Wow.
And to me, this is just another way to engage kids.
Yes.
And reach kids that may, you know, may not be involved in something else. So, I salute you and your group for taking time to introduce that, and...
Well, thank you.
I can see that really taking off and really serving our kids well.
I hope so, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Let us know what we can do to support you, too.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for just letting us come.
Thanks, Jimmy and Rendell, and for all the time you put in.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And Gary Nielsen, I think, is involved in pickleball, too, right?
He's one of our volunteer instructors, and he is excellent at instructing. He really is.
She and I are supposed to play this summer.
May I leave these with y'all?
Yes.
This is a little bit more about it. Y'all, these are locations from two years ago of recognized pickleball courts in the United States. See the gathering of the scatter graph? And that's two years ago. It's probably almost doubled by now.
Sure.
There we go. And there we go. And thank y'all.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Does anyone else have a public comment card they'd like to turn in before we start this section of our agenda? I have two. Okay, I'd like first to call Shanice Isaac. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. She's going to speak to us about tobacco prevention training for educators.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have some flyers for you. I stand before you today to present the Florida Tobacco Prevention Training for Educators. It is an online course that we are trying to have implemented into the schools, so that it teaches instructors and counselors, how to implement tobacco prevention in...within their curriculum. It is...it opened up on August 13th, and it remains open 24/7 up until June 6, 2019. And on that day, the course will close. It is at no cost to all Florida Department of Education-certified teachers and counselors. And it is...okay, the course can be used for continuing education, and it can also serve as credits to go towards teacher recertification. So...
Points, there's a lot of points towards recertification.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're trying to get our teachers involved. They can go to the website, www.tobaccopreventiontraining.org, to register. The pre-registration stage is open as of right now. And our goal is to present this course, and hopefully enough teachers will take...partake in it and implement it into their lesson plans and get our students involved in class and help out the SWAT initiative. Because that is what I do. I am the current tobacco educator and SWAT coordinator. So, I go out and I recruit kids for...well, youth and younger adults for the students working against Tobacco Club. So, this will, I guess, reach them during school hours when I'm not around. That's one of my goals, is to go out into the school more, so that they will see my face and be able to associate my face with the program, so they won't think that I'm a stranger and that I do care about their health as it relates to tobacco use. And that is all that I have for you today.
Okay. I want to...how do we make sure this gets to every school, so that all the teachers will be aware of it?
Director Superintendent? We can send that out. Do we have to get a digital copy of that?
I'm directing you.
We have sent it out. There's an email that comes out. We can send out another one, but it goes out to Wendy Hancock.
Okay.
And I know one of our women was just taking advantage of it to use it to recertify.
Yeah, I need to do it soon. Mine will expire soon, 20...
You've been chewing all that bull of the woods, children.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Don't be a stranger. Come, let us know what's going on.
Okay, I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Nicholas Nelson to speak to us about the lockdown yesterday. I guess you're talking about yesterday?
Yes, ma'am. How are y'all doing?
Fine. Any questions?
My name is Nicholas Nelson. I live in 474 U.S. Highway 17, East Polatka. I just had a few questions about the lockdown yesterday. Was during the lockdown, there was a few schools that wasn't locked down, like Mellon wasn't, and the high school was, right across the street. So, that was a concern, because I got, you know, a lot of...I got a lot of kids and stepchildren, so I got kids all over the county. And while my wife went to PHS to check out, my stepson to her doctor's appointment was right in the middle of the lockdown at 10:15. They wouldn't let her leave, which I understand, and they wouldn't let none of the students leave, I understand. But while she was in there, they let her in, and they let 18 other people in after her during what is supposed to be an active lockdown, is what they're telling us. That was a big concern of mine, but the main concern was, was what I feel is the integrity of the school board, was when I got the phone call finally, you know, I knew that the school was on lockdown, because my wife happened to be there. But I called here, and they didn't know anything about it. So, I called her back, then I called here back, and then finally, there was some communication between this high school and here that they let us know what was going on. But when I got the message on my phone finally, at almost 1 o'clock, I believe it was, they said that the lockdown was from 12 to the current time that I got the message on my phone. And...but I know it was, you know, at 10:15. So, just that little simple lie, two hours, kind of makes me question the integrity of our school board, and it makes me worry and, you know, wonder why. I understand why, you know, you're going to have parents calling up, "Well, why didn't you tell us for three hours?" But, you know, now I know, because I know, you know, and they just blatantly lied on the message. I mean, I have it on my phone that the lockdown started at 12 o'clock, when I know at 10:15 it was already started, so.
Well, first of all, thanks for coming and sharing this with us.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you that there's nobody in the schools that want to cause anybody any problems. We're number one thing that we pride ourselves on is we love our kids, and we're going to try to keep them and our employees and parents safe.
Right, and I appreciate that.
Now, I don't know the superintendent could answer this question better than I, because when I heard about it, and I have grandkids in some of the schools that were locked down...
Correct.
I called him.
Right.
But I have a luxury of having a straight line to him, and I found out what was going on. But I heard from some other parents, and I let them know to look on the sheriff's office thing, because they had...by the time I found out about it, it was predominantly over.
Right.
I had seen Donnie Jordan go by me very fast on Highway 100, who's the agricultural deputy for the county, and he was going to the scene. I knew something was up, but I didn't know. But Rick, do you want to respond?
Well, we were just monitoring the situation as it was happening, and we went into lockdown. In the specific schools that were locked down, you know, we were locked down for security reasons, which I can't get into.
Fine, that's right.
But again, I apologize for any delay or anything in contacting you.
Right.
As soon as we assess the situation, we try to get the word out to parents.
Right.
Again, I apologize for any inconvenience or anything that happened.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. All right.
Our main goal is keep kids safe.
Right. And I appreciate that, and I don't, you know, but the fact that 17 people come in during the lockdown, I mean, was it...is it just not a serious lockdown? What's the deal? I mean, either it's a procedure or it's not a procedure. Either you...you know, I worked on Navy boats when I worked in Jacksonville, and when you were four ships out on a boat, and the second boat got locked down, guess what? You didn't get off.
Well, our director of security is standing behind you, and that, your concern is duly noted, and we will definitely look into any inconsistencies.
I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
It takes a lot of courage to come up here, so...
Yeah, yeah, I ain't no public speaker, that's for sure.
Come back any time.
I appreciate it. I might hang out for a little bit.
Okay.
Lot better than Ms. Crawford. Got you back.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
You're welcome.
Okay. Time for the consent agenda, so I need to know if any board members would like any items pulled.
I've been in since this morning, and I've been through everything, and I have no item to pull.
Okay, Mr. Buckles? Ms. Gilliard?
The one that I am concerned about, it was listed on the NEPEC, and I think...
We have a representative here?
We do? Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Helms is here.
Mr. Helms is here.
Okay. So, then...
So, that...the one you're wanting to pull would be?
Wait a minute.
Looking.
I got it. Here it is. It's J.4. And it's just for information only. I'm just asking.
Florida Standards Academy.
Yes.
Okay. I got all my questions answered prior to the meeting, so...
Madam Chair, could I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus J.4 at Ms. Gilliard's request?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. What is your question? Stephen, do you want to come up, please?
And it's not hard. I just...I saw the money. It's good money. I just...I'm just sorry that I can't offer this service, so that, you know, $600,000. But I was asking to see if any of our employees are listed, and I saw Joe Theobald is listed in another part of your leadership training, and I just wanted to see, would he be a part of helping to come up with these standards? What they're doing, they're looking at, I'm assuming, the standards that are tested in the schools, and I just want to know if Joe Theobald was a part of that. He's in one of the leadership academies, and...
I don't want to give bad information, but I'm sure he's welcome to come out there and work for us.
I was just thinking, you know, if we had somebody on the inside, then they could come back and give that information to us.
Sure, I'll put that...
And that was all, and I wouldn't have asked it earlier.
Tanya, would you know? Would you know if Joe's part of that?
Don't go anywhere yet.
Okay.
I can answer. Is this for all the NEPEC districts?
It's actually for the state.
State standard.
And it's only 76 X number of, of participants.
It's actually the one that you were talking about with, uh, Mr. Theobald. That's the, um, Brian Dassler Leadership Academy.
Right. He's in that.
Yes. That is something that every district in the state was allowed two participants, one the state pays for, one the district pays for. We've had many people in our district already participate in the Brian Dassler Leadership Academy. Um, and so that is, that is like the group of people from the state level, not the state, but from across the state that are going to be at the Brian Dassler Leadership Academy. It's held, it's held in Orlando.
Okay.
Okay? So that's like, that's J3. J4 is the Standards Academy, and for you to attend the Florida Standards Academy, you had to be a previous Brian Dassler Leadership Academy participant, and you had to apply. So we have, Michelle Higginbotham is going, and who else?
Okay. Okay, yeah.
So that's, it's something that NEPEC runs for the entire state of Florida.
Okay, alrighty.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
You would need to make...
Because we need to stay abreast of it. All right, move. Acceptance of item J4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we're going to, I guess I need to do this over here. Go out of regular session into emergency session. We have two items, well, we have additional items.
Madam Chair, can, can I point out number four?
Yeah.
Emergency item. I'm going to pull that from the agenda today.
Okay, so we're, we're taking off three and four.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the first item is to hire two tutors for James A. Long Elementary to provide intent, intensive reading intervention. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, emergency item one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is hire four temporary intervention paraprofessionals through REMEDY to provide daily small group instruction at Browning Pierce Elementary School. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chair, a move that we allow them to hire four temporary intervention paraprofessionals through REMEDY to provide small group instruction at Browning Pierce Elementary School.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to go out of emergency session, back into regular session. We have, um, under discussion and unfinished business, we remove from the table the articulation agreement between Putnam County School District and St. John's County School District. And now we need to discuss the articulate, articulation agreement between these two districts.
Well, I think you need to, um, if I'm not correct, make a motion to take it off.
Okay, we didn't do that last week, the last board meeting? I thought we did something with it.
No, we were going to bring it back at this board meeting.
Okay.
Well, I just want to double check with the superintendent. We, we have got to complete the services that we are currently involved with, with St. John's County, so we really need to do this until we can get on...
Right, that, that is correct. And Renee, I don't know if you want to offer anything at all, but, um, yeah, we pretty much, it's, it's pretty customary. We just need to complete, um, that agreement with them.
Right.
This has nothing to do with the facility at all, it's just, you know, providing that post-secondary service.
All right. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, unless, is there any others coming?
No, I'm good.
I'm bad to do that. Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, approve...
We've got to remove it.
Excuse me?
We've got to remove it first.
Procedurally, okay, remove the table, articulate, we remove the articulation agreement between Putnam County School District and St. John's County School District.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So then, we need to, um, discuss the articulation agreement between Putnam County School District and the St. John's County School District, which we kind of already did.
You've got other questions? I've got a lot, but I don't think I need to worry about them now.
Well, I think now's the time, if we, um...
Well, I think, I think the superintendent's well aware and he's working on it. Our, our goal is to provide as many services as we can and to gather, and my, one of my personal things is to work on legislative appropriations to go along with this.
Right.
Until we get through unraveling ourselves for a nice, lack of a nicer term, from St. John's, uh, charter, district charter school vocational...
And we get our own workforce dollars.
We get our own workforce development funding here in Putnam County, then we can do the things that we've needed to do for decades.
And is their date certain?
We, we have not received that date yet, is that correct, Lori? I know we've put in a public records request for that information, for the teach-out, is what you're referring to?
I believe that the, the final date for the nursing program is April, the end of April. Do you know about Weldon? Weldon is supposed to be 1920, so...
That's a little bit further on, but that's at the Varge Park.
Right.
That's correct.
It's not our...
And, and we are nego, we are talking with St. John's County, trying to work out the transition.
I know we are. And, and, but technically, I, you know, not to say that we should ever not enter into an agreement with any district that has something that could benefit our students, because we would certainly be open to that, but in particular, we'd like to get our footing under, underway with St. John's River State College.
Right. And that is, that is in process.
And it is in process with our advanced manufacturing and our LPM program through St. John's River State College and, and plans, plans for more programs, so it's, it's all very exciting.
Do you have any other questions about the articulation agreement that we can answer?
I do not.
I don't.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, enter, uh, this, we, it doesn't say enter, it just says, we approve the articulation agreement between Putnam County School District and St. John's County School District.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item for discussion, uh, discussion input and action for the best and brightest classroom teacher eligibility. And, well, we do have documents.
Ms. Whitehurst here too.
And we have Taunt, Ms. Whitehurst here, if anyone has any questions.
I have spoken with you, concern of mine.
I think the change involves who actually is eligible for the money.
Yes, ma'am. So we are now going into the fourth year of best and brightest, and, um, the requirements have changed every year. One year they said, you know, it wasn't a whole lot of direction, then they wanted the boards to make the decision. Then last year, the direction was just read the statute, like whatever you, so like districts were all doing a lot of...
Blah, blah, blah.
So, um, the change is back to the dis, the district board making the decision as who is, who is to be deemed as a classroom teacher, but still keeping into consideration what, um, 1012.01 states as a classroom teacher. So I've put together the documents, I put together, gave you the letter, the DOE update with some just overview information along with the statute, and in the document that I gave you, highlighted in yellow is the actual definition of classroom teacher. And it, the, the key there is that they are in classroom situations, including basic instruction, exceptional student education, career education, and adult education, including substitute teachers. It's not our substitute teachers because we, we use a different, um, company for subs, so we don't have to worry about that.
Because I was like, you're going to give into a substitute teacher, but not a guidance counselor.
So, but then, the rest of 1012.01 specifies what is not classified as a classroom teacher, and it's very clear as to what it says. Certified school counselors, social workers, career specialists, school psychologists, librarians, media specialists, primary specialists, learning resource specialists, instructional trainers, adjunct educators, and education paraprofessionals. So, a lot of the discussion last year came from, well, what if some of these people are also teaching classes? Because we know that happens across the state. And so I reached out to our auditor, because that's really the ones that are going to be looking at it. And the information that I received was that they are okay with a classroom teach, like a guidance counselor, if they're also teaching classes, but they have to be teaching classes more than 50% of the day in order to be considered a classroom teacher. So it's really what their primary responsibility is, is what it comes down to. And, um, classes where they have, um, like the, where a lot of them are doing like volunteer public service and they have like office aides and things like that assigned to them, that's not a classroom setting where they're actually teaching a course. So that doesn't classify them as a classroom teacher also.
So them going to classrooms on a regular basis to teach classes in another teacher's classroom also doesn't count?
If they do that more than 50% of their time.
Right. But it's not like a class has been assigned to the classroom that they do go...
And that's right, I get it, but they do not do it more than 50% of their time. And that's, that's really the key, is what is their primary responsibility? So I have to get this information out to teachers as quickly as possible, because there is a deadline. They have to apply by November 1st, and some of them may have to like try to get ACT and SAT scores. So my recommendation is basically that we just go with exactly what the state statute says about what a classroom teacher is.
Yeah, we don't have any choice.
And if we are to allow a media specialist or a guidance counselor or anyone else to be eligible, then it means that they have at least 50% of their day is also teaching in a classroom setting.
Do we have any in that situation?
Maybe an elementary or middle.
Well, I know Kay talked through classes last year at Black Knight.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be, there could be one or two that are in that situation, but, I mean, I would have to go like school by school.
So this, you're going to send this information to them as well, so they will know if they qualify or not.
So this, as soon as you, um, make a decision on this, I will take what we have here, if this is with, from my recommendation, what you approve. I've already got everything else ready to go. I will just add this clarification into who they, who is eligible as a classroom teacher, and it will be going out to teachers, um, by the end of this week or maybe Monday, maybe Monday. Let me say Monday, that, that gives me an extra two days.
Okay.
Will we just, will we need any motion on this, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, we have.
You've got more questions, Senator?
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
I was just going to, unless you, and, and I, you can still, after a second, make more, give more discussion, but, uh, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, M1, discussion input, best and brightest classroom teacher eligibility.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
See, I was just going to say that, you know, we had the situation in the past wherein, but now with it spelled out here...
Well, we don't have any choice. I mean, as much as we would like for, um, media specialists and guidance counselors, because we know what they do, to get, be, you know, to be eligible for this money, I mean, it spells it out, that they can't be.
I don't see any high school counselors even being able to work 50% of their time to do, to do this. But it, at least if they understand that going into it, it's not as hard when it comes out. They, they see that, for whatever reason, they're not included.
Okay, it's that time where we give board reports. Which of you would like to go first? Mr. Buckles?
I'm, I'm...
B for Buckles.
I'm so long-winded, and I've, I've got volleyball games with, one of my granddaughters is playing at Palaca High, coming up in a little bit, so I look forward to that. I, I had a couple of things that, uh, I wanted to mention. I'd had a few contacts from parents, uh, related to DOT, as I kept trying to say DOE in the earlier workshop, I kept referring to DOE as DOT because it's on my mind. With my, my contact with DOT over the years has not always been satisfying, but it's not always been bad. John, would you, you're, you're the DOE con, DOT contact now, is that correct? Pretty much, I mean, we all do.
Sometimes and sometimes not.
I think that we as a board need to maybe, and I know everybody's played full, schools just started, but we need to look at some of the things that we might have some legislative ability to do something about, i.e. would be speed limit by QI Robert School. I've had some parents, they had a near miss accident, uh, this past week out there, you know, it's a, I think they slowed a 45, but it's still, you know, it's a 60 mile an hour zone coming up to it, and people just fly by. And DOT T is very reluctant to do anything that would impede the flow of traffic, as has been my experience in the past. Also, locally, in the Palaca area, I've had some complaints about people and parents picking up kids from Jenkins, flying by James A. Long and James A. Long flying by Jenkins, and other schools, so we might just request law enforcement to maybe have a, a presence, and, and I know they do at times, Rick, but, uh, maybe see if Mr. Chastain can work with whoever...
Yeah, we can reach out to them and report back to...
Reach out to them, see what you can do.
Happy to.
But as far as, uh, the Department of Transportation, it made, it, if you would get with, uh, staff and maybe talk to some of the principals, and if we have any wholesale things that, that we really feel strongly about, i.e., you know, the traffic at QI Roberts and the speed zone, and other schools in the county, we have, we have, uh, with the legislative team, we have now representing us with Keith Perry and Rob Bradley and, uh...
Bobby.
Yeah, Bobby Payne. I think, I, I feel like we're in real good stead to maybe get DOT to work with us. I know the last time the board got together was about four years ago, and we wrote a, a joint letter to DOT to try to install a, a red light at Boston, and DOT would not go for it because not enough people had been killed in enough shortage of period, period of time. Well, I mean, they go by raw numbers and they, they, you know, unless you have the legislative clout to, to do things like that, you can't get it done. And there may be other areas on some of our bus routes in the county that might take a flashing light or a, or a stoplight, but, you know, we, we've, we've got some sore spots that, and I know they don't, that, that's going to be the thing. They're going to tell you they don't want to slow the, impede the flow of traffic, and I get it. But if you would have, get Mr. Chastain and maybe put a little group together and see what you could do, and I'd love to hear back from you all.
Yep.
Okay?
Mr. Chastain, we'll get together and report back at the next board meeting.
And I've got something I need to add to that when I do mine.
All right, well, let me, let me finish as well, and I'll, I'll wrap up because it's been a pretty good long day. We had a, uh, the last work, uh, board meeting we entered into, we, we had a little, I, I know it came out in the headlines as quarreling, uh, between board members, but I, I'm going to tell you.
I didn't think we did.
Uh, well, it, it doesn't matter. I, I'm of the opinion that you're up here, you know, you should maintain decorum and you should follow, uh, etiquette, and Robert's rules of order are very important, and sometimes we drift off, but sometimes you have to fight for what you believe is right and what's in the best interest of the students and the people you represent.
I agree.
And, and I would want a board member to fight back with me if they didn't agree, because somewhere in the middle usually is the best solution. And, uh, there, there are just times that you can't be scared to, to take someone to task and to get outside the comfort zone in the box. And I, I suppose it's been a, a lifetime of being a school teacher and administrator, and then, you know, superintendent and now school board member again, it, it just, uh, certainly, it, 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 there are times when you just got to dig your heels in and you've got to fight. It doesn't mean you can't be, uh, accommodating and listen and, and rational, but if you're dealing with a situation that, that calls for, uh, really strong feelings and to tell you how, how you feel, right or wrong, you better get out there and you better do what's, what you can for the kids so you can sleep at night. So that's, that's all I'd like to add.
Berline Bennett does a great workshop on fighting fair, so we have to get that.
Maybe we need to get her back to Putnam County.
We may have to get her for you.
Fight for the kids.
Yeah. All right, um, the things that I, I want to mention in my report, uh, the in-service that, that happened at all of the schools during pre-planning, thumbs up, a lot of great things are happening with the various grants and, and like I've already stated, the training that is going on. And it's not just for the teachers, but the paraproses are being involved in it, because they too are with the children. I just thumbs up to those, uh, and, uh, I have down here to mention, uh, Joe Theobald being a participant in the Brian Dassler Leadership Academy Institute, that is great. Thumbs up to PALS, Police Athletic League, they always are now, I know for the past five years, along with other agencies in the community, are giving out school supplies, and it's not just junk, there's some nice things those students are getting, so that they could be prepared for school. And there are also churches and other community agencies that are giving out school supplies to our children, and we are pleased about that, and kudos to them, and thumbs up, and all those other things. Like to mention Palacah Daily News on their coverage of school opening with the pictures of the kids' first day, all excited, you know, like that.
A lot of kids jumping off the bus.
Yeah, yeah, he was excited. And then Lift Putnan with Jim Paget, they enrolled over 120 pre-K students...
For a full day.
For a full day, and then, out of the ones in last school term that were kindergarten-ready, they tested at 60% in the district, but from those that had a full day of pre-K, they were, it was 90% of them that passed, so we know there, we've made a wise decision, and thumbs up to Jim Paget and Lift Putnan. Also, I was reading the paper this morning, and there's a circuit judge by the name of John Cooper that threw off the ballot Amendment 8, and there are some things in there that are pretty tricky. Term limitations, I have no problem with that, but the way that they put the charter schools out there, it seemed lax in what, it was almost like anybody...
It was deceptive language.
Right, right, that anybody could just throw one up on a corner in a storefront or something like that, and just go for it, without really having to do anything to get these children ready, certainly not like ours, we have some great charter schools, so just thankful for that. And the Department of Transportation, I did get a call from a concerned parent about the flow of traffic at Browning Pierce Elementary, and I promised that I would've checked into it this morning, unfortunately, I didn't get up there to check into it, but I will be tomorrow, and I'm hoping that time will ease, yeah, it'll ease out, because they said they were in line like 10 minutes, trying to drop their children off, so we'll see how that goes, and I'll get back with you if we really need to address it further.
If you're coming from East Palacah to San Mateo, and right there at the old San Mateo Restaurant, you'll notice that long turn lane.
Yes, yes.
We had DOE, DOT now, I've got it backwards, put that long lane in, so the buses would not crowd up on the highway, and we'd get them stacked up there to turn all at one time. And then, when Kelly Smith was state representative, I was the principal at Browning Pierce over there, and when you turn in by Cowart's Meat Market, I was 17, we had to widen that culvert because Ms. Lewis, Winifred Lewis, Rena, came over in the ditch there one day, and so we got that done, but that's, we don't know unless we gather the information, and then we can approach it all at one time.
Yeah, and then to our district office personnel, I know we mentioned last time about Emory Riddles and all the things that are gonna happen, just can't say enough about how much you all do, and when I read through the agenda, and I see the work that's going for school improvement, et cetera, we are moving in the right direction, and it takes time, Rome wasn't built in a day, but I know that we are progressing a whole lot faster than some recognize, and that's it.
I just wanted to mention in my board report that we had a very positive workshop today with Putnam Edge, and things are moving along, and some concerns that the board had are being worked out, and we're very excited about that. I have been talking to students from every grade level for the last, since school started, and they have all been just so excited about school. They love their schools, they love their teachers. Now, some of the high school kids that were on lockdown yesterday were pretty mad that they got stuck in the same class for three hours, but, you know, it is what it is, and we were keeping them safe, yeah. My traffic concern, I had a call from a parent last night, or yesterday afternoon, and this is at Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences on Palm Avenue, and she said that is an accident waiting to happen there, because the traffic is backed up, which, you know, there's, I don't even think there's a barely a slowdown sign at that school, but, and you know, and maybe time will ease that, as the parents are going in to pick up, but she said it was after school, and she said they were stacked up all the way down to the red light, coming in both directions.
The principal and Nancy McClellan, a year ago, to try to resolve that, and DOT was in a big spat with the city or the county over who's right of way the sign would go on, and I was under the impression they had put up a flashing sign, but I haven't seen it, if they have it...
They put it up.
When?
Somebody may need to go help them out, tell them how to write those parents, come down to Kennedy's Freedom Month.
Well, that's what I'm just, I was just bringing it up.
That's what we're asking you to do.
That's what we're, you know, do we need to let the police department know that they need to direct traffic there, or...
Well, it's not just...
I like the Kennedy idea.
It's not just there at the Children's Learning Center.
Kennedy, yeah, but somebody's gotta tell them.
Yeah.
All these schools have similar problems, some of our charter schools, but it doesn't matter.
And now it doesn't matter, it's still our kids.
They're not gonna, they may get, they got the flashing light, which is a lot better than having no light.
Yes.
But I don't know that they're gonna get better, I'm kinda like John, it's probably gonna have to take some organization on how to unload the kids and pick them up.
We'll reach out to them and offer any assistance, and, you know, whatever we can do to advise them.
Thank you. Sandy mentioned this, but I wanna mention it as well, I'm so excited about the collaboration between Embry-Riddle University and QI Roberts for credit courses, credit classes in aerospace engineering, it's only gonna get bigger and better, and hopefully grow into, you know, a flagship program, you know, and be available at our other high schools, but this is a start, and we're very excited about it. The last thing I wanna say is that Feed the Need is having another packing event, it's very exciting, it's going to be held at St. John's River State College, and they're gonna have two, they're gonna have one in the morning, or one early in the day, for college kids, and then one later in the day for students, I think they're working it through the local churches, so with youth groups, and Denise is working on that now, and she had told us at Kiwanis today, that they just got a $15,000 grant from Clay Electric, and that's gonna buy a lot of ravioli, and she told us how much it really costs to buy that for the year, and so this is, you know, they're just doing such great things with the Feed the Need Backpack Program, and we're excited to be a little part of that.
Date for the...
Yeah, it's in September, I've got it, she sent an email, and I should've brought it with me, but I'll let you know. And so that's all I have. And Mr. Attorney?
Everything is going well in the legal department.
Okay, we're glad to hear it.
I have two things I wanna mention, first of all, echo your comments about the workshop today with Edge, we did wanna have this discussion with Edge, our main concern is we wanna make sure that they are moving in the right direction, and make sure our students start on time, I mean, their students are our students.
Yes.
And we wanna ensure that they start on time, so that they can get the adequate number of seat hours, so they're not in danger of graduation, of not graduating. But we have called a special board meeting...
Correct.
Just wanna say this for the record, on Wednesday, August 29th, at 4:30, and the purpose of that meeting is for Edge to come back and provide progress to this board, to show that they will in fact start school on September 4th. And again, I mean, we're being very cooperative and understanding, but I wanna just make sure we are very clear, we want those students in school by September 4th, because we don't want any problems with them not getting their credits. So I'm asking the board to be vigilant about that, because we oversee Edge, and just to make sure they, you know, are able to meet those requirements. And I believe they are moving in the right direction as well, but we have a responsibility to make sure those students, you know, get an educational like the rest of the students.
I agree.
I do wanna point out, I went to a meeting last week with the Department of Economic Opportunity, and they were, Putnam County was one of 12 counties selected by the governor to meet and discuss some of the economic issues that we are facing.
Wonderful.
And these are, these are mainly counties that have not recovered from the recession of 2008, 2009, and we were there with a number of business people and government officials at the Board of County Commissioners, and the number one thing, one of the major things that we wanna focus on, that I brought up to the group, was workforce development, and that's one of our goals here as a district, is we wanna make sure that we are turning out qualified students who can get high-paying, high-demand jobs, and that's part of our advanced manufacturing, nursing, everything that we're doing in our high schools. So again, we're trying to meet those economic needs of our community, and, you know, the state recognizes that as well, they wanna make sure they provide that support to Putnam County. So I'll keep you posted on that, but I do think we are moving in the right direction.
Oh, we absolutely are.
And our graduation rates are improving, district grades improving, and all that is a sign that not only our school system, but our county is getting healthier.
It is a systemic issue, you have to develop a plan, it takes kids from full-time pre-K to career tech opportunities for post-graduation employment, Rick, and I think the district has got a great plan together.
Have a plan.
And can it be improved? I'm sure we're gonna find spots.
Very good.
But good job.
Yeah, thanks to y'all.
We have great teachers out there, making it happen.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all I have.
That's all? Meeting is adjourned.